Order. Um, it is sometime in twenty twenty-five. I think it's March tenth. A Monday. Thank you. Thank you. Not Tuesday like I thought earlier for some reason. It seemed like I'd worked two days already. Well, we don't have the agenda except electronically, so I don't have it in front of me. But anyway, we'll go from memory here and call the roll.
Here.
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 Yeah.
All right, I know the minutes of the January thirteenth meeting were emailed with your packet. Has everybody had a chance to review those?
Yep.
Anybody have any questions, comments? That my name was misspelled at least in one place? No? Yeah. Yeah. That's all right. Yeah, that's true. I don't want to be the mayor. Too much media coverage. All right. No corrections to make. Anybody want to motion to approve those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve them. January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Can I get a second? We got a second. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Nope. All right, minutes approved. Um, we have no public hearings thankfully. Uh, new business. We have a presentation, I believe, Mr. Connor from Shaw Development on the hundred and seventy-seven acre potential project coming up. I'm surprised we don't have a lot of people from the public out here interested in it. But they could be watching online. That's true. You got two people online? Well, welcome.
Turn it over to Steve Simone.
All right.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Sounds good.
Steve Simone is with Ballser and Associates, eighty College Street in Christiansburg. Kevin had reached out last week and said, I thought this would be a good idea to come and kind of give you guys a preview of what you might be seeing here coming up soon. Couple of months ago, we we met with Mr. Day and and counsel and kind of talked through this as a process, as a project, kind of what we'd like to see. So what I wanted to show you tonight is kind of the master plans. You may have seen them. I think Todd kept a couple of copies there from our first meeting with him. So you may have seen these and then kind of talked through what we would anticipate coming to you guys with and to counsel with from a rezoning perspective. So on the first page, that's just your existing zoning map. So this is the hundred and seventy-four acres by the hospital. Right now, there's a big chunk that's on Memorial there that's B two. We've got a small portion that's the residential office zoning on Lee Highway, and then the the middle part is R one. On page two, you'll see what we're proposing to go to. Most of the property would go to an R three. And then we would leave a portion on Memorial and a portion of Lee Highway, taking those to B two. I'll kind of talk through that a little bit, but that's kind of the zoning designations we'll be looking at. And I guess just to go ahead and jump into the zoning piece of it, the B two that's out there right now on Memorial, that's going to be sufficient for some of the uses that we might be thinking out there and along Lee Highway as well, allowing for some more commercial uses than what would be allowed in that R existing zoning. The R three, you'll see, if you want to flip over to maybe page, I guess your your page three says one of two in the document there. This is our overall master plan. So you'll see most of the property there in the middle is single family. It would be single family detached residential. You'll see kind of the peach pink color. That's our commercial area that we showed as B two on the previous page. Kind of the pale yellow in there. Those would be townhomes. You'll see up in the upper left-hand corner, we've got a legend showing the property summary. So with this zoning, we would have about eighteen point three acres of commercial. Seventy-two acres of the whole property would remain as open space or parkland. About thirteen acres would be dedicated as right-of-way and streets. And in the townhome area, in that pale yellow area, we'd have about a hundred and two townhomes and then a hundred and eighty-seven single-family lots in the remainder of the parcel. What we've tried to do in the layout with Kevin's help from from his standpoint on construction. One of the biggest pieces of this is trying to keep this development as cost efficient as possible. So these homes can be, I'm not going to use the affordable word, but more reasonably priced. That's that's kind of the goal that that Mr. Day is shooting for and and Mr. Hagan and Mr. Connor as well. So we looked really hard as far as how we were citing roads, where we were putting them along the topography to minimize cut fill, use the existing infrastructure that's in there. There's some water and sewer that cuts through the site right now, utilizing that where we could, using low points obviously for stormwater management where we need it in a couple of different areas. We've got three or four, I guess, four different road connection points, one over on Lee High, three on Pepper's Ferry, and then we would obviously have a commercial access on a memorial. We just don't have anything laid out on there yet. So we do have good cross-access and cross-connection through the property. At the very upper right-hand side, you see the big chunk of parkland. The idea there is we could possibly have a, you know, a trail that would spur off at the end of that kind of dead-end road right there and then take us up for maybe some loop nature trails. Maybe a gazebo, not amphitheater, but a gazebo or some sort of structure up there for the residents in the neighborhood. All these streets would be built to VDOT town standards, curb and gutter and sidewalk on one side of the street. We had proposed, I think we had given Mr. Day a copy of that road section, but about a twenty-foot street width. So again, trying to keep the roads to a to a VDOT and and town standard, but keep them small enough to keep the traffic rolling at a at a slower pace. You know, not build a big thirty or thirty-six foot road where you're going to have a bunch of people flying through. Townhome sections themselves, those would be likely individual townhomes for for rent or for sale. And then most of those would probably be parked within a common parking lot. We wouldn't anticipate having garages with those. We could get into some of those layouts as we get into the project that we do have it, but we would meet all the parking requirements by by town code. On your fourth page, two of two, on the bottom right-hand side there, you'll see the phasing plan. So we've looked to see how we could break this thing out as we, you know, take it little little bites at a time again, so you're not putting in all the infrastructure all at once. So we've got it broken out to a pretty, you know, pretty manageable phases, phase one, thirty-four lots. And you can see the numbers, got the legend up there at the top and then the numbers within the sheet itself. So phase one would be, we've got five lots kind of in the lower right-hand side of the page that would front directly on Pepper's Ferry, and then you've got the next set further down to the left that front on Pepper's Ferry and then enter into the site. And then you can see as we go through two, three, four, five and six for that total of the the unit count we've got there. So two hundred and eighty-nine total residential units. On your fourth and fifth page, we had a couple of architects that just worked on some schematic, just really massing studies. So this this could be one section of the townhomes. This would be on the left-hand side where you kind of see that that oblong open space there in the middle of the of the townhouse on the left. So this would be kind of in that area. Those townhomes would would wrap around that open space and have parking right up against the units. And then you'll see on the last page, just a conceptual street plan, a street section as you're going up one of the one of the main roads there. So you can kind of see the size, style of the homes. The idea would be, Kevin could talk about this a little bit, as far as the, you know, approximate square footage we'll we'll be looking at, but again moderately priced. One of the things on the R three, we looked at is trying to figure out what zoning district best to fit in here. We know the R three allows us to do the townhomes within that by right as well, but it also allows a single family. So what we've got here, all of our lots are in the R one and R two size threshold with that ten thousand square foot minimum. But we've got our lot sizes down to about seventy feet, and R one and R two require a one hundred foot lot width. So that's why we've kind of shrunk it, you know, asking for the R three on all of it instead of trying to piecemeal a little bit R one or R two and then R three. So if we do it all R three, we can do the single family and the townhomes within that R three by right zoning. So the plan would be, and I'll again let Kevin answer as far as when we're thinking, we're going to look to go through and and actually apply for the rezoning. Kevin, I don't know.
How far along are you with, you know, making a determination with the town about moving forward?
There's still, there's still some little stuff they're working out, attorneys and the town. So I think that's getting close to being complete.
Looking looking positive though?
Yes.
Or you wouldn't be here?
And as soon as we get that worked out, then we'll turn them loose to do the application. Probably what wouldn't be much more than what's in front of you.
Okay. Okay.
Has there been, has there been physical surveys on site here, or has this been all this satellite or?
Everything we've done so far has just been off a GIS or LiDAR. We've not done any field work yet.
Okay. Yeah, I was, so have you done core samples over there? Okay. It's very challenging. There's a lot of shale within a foot of going deep, so it's, you're going to run into a lot of rock. So, yeah. But yeah, so that's just something I was just asking if that's been done yet, but.
Welcome to P- 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 County.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, yeah. There's a, stormwater is, I know, the biggest concern in that area that there's a lot of very marshy and a lot of runoff and a challenges in that aspect. So I saw a lot of management you had in
Yep.
in the pictures. So that assume would take care of those items.
So I assume some of this could change based on any issues that would come up, right? I have a question generally that y'all may not know, and Olivia may not know. Is this entire tract served from the water tower out at the end there? Okay. And how does the water get to that tank? Where where does it come from? That is gatewood water though, right?
I think.
From the treatment plant up on Randolph?
It looks like, if that's that blue line, I think that goes directly out to Pepper's Ferry line.
Okay. I just don't know what route it takes. We'd have to look at the maps to see. Have y'all done, have y'all looked at that at all?
Had provided us some maps. Yeah, I can't remember which direction.
I mean, because that's quite a, this is quite a big development for town, you know.
Larger tank though.
Yes, it is. And it's one of the newer ones and some of the newer lines out there, but
Yes.
if it's, you know, coming from up here and coming down Main Street and out and around, you know, creates its own concerns, but.
Oh, yeah.
He said earlier, you know, we're just looking to
Sure.
take chunks.
Yeah.
Do a little bit at a time. You know, if we build a snowball and, you know, you know, if we sell ten the first year or twenty, thirty, you know, we don't, we don't know what to do.
Mm-hmm.
If we keep the cost as low, you know, as low as possible, we might, you know, bring a little bit from the fronters, you know, Bradford. Instead of a five hundred thousand dollar house there, it's a three hundred and forty thousand.
Mm-hmm. Hmm. So the new sewer line that serves the school, would that help with this? I mean, I I just hope we're not going to have trouble with our infrastructure. I mean, being able to service the property. Yeah.
I know whenever there's water breaks, there's not ever any pressure issues up there.
You don't ever have trouble?
No, never.
You don't lose water, ever have to boil?
And one of the things I've talked to Mr. Day about.
It's kind of what I was wondering about.
They've got a consultant who does a lot of work for everybody else. That would be part of what
Mm-hmm.
Ballser would be having a consultant with a water model and stuff. So we'd probably have them do it too. We'll figure all that out to work together.
Right. Okay. I mean, one thing you've said tonight that I want to think about, and I guess that's why we're here tonight doing this. If all this gets zoned R three and you found after, you know, building twenty homes that they're just not selling, then somebody else might come in and say, well, I'll buy this piece of property from you. And then by right, they can throw up an apartment building that's, you know, made of matchsticks or whatever, as long as it meets code. Which is not something we've, you know, we're anticipating. So it's our job to kind of anticipate that potential. I don't know if there's a way to avoid ending up in that situation. I wouldn't expect, you know, any kind of guarantee that you're going to build every house, you know, because if it's not feasible.
I could look at the contract and see, I think there are some, I won't say guarantees in there, but
Yeah.
guarantees, but I I can look at that all the book.
Yeah. I wondered more about provisions in the deeds or something like that.
Yeah, I I, it may be something in there that we can't, we can't then sell it to somebody else.
Yeah.
It may be something I I don't care.
Some way for the town to control unplanned and unplanned explosion of any particular type of housing that wasn't anticipated is what I'm getting at.
Just out of curiosity, so you're thinking of running this as R three and B two instead of, I guess this may be a rookie question, versus planned unit development? Okay.
Yep.
More more just because of the process of going through the planning unit development, spelling out every little detail. R three and the B two is kind of good as it as it stands.
It it works for them.
It works.
If it works for the town, then that's probably fine, right? The only other thing I noticed was when you take the the property with the house on it to rezone that from R O to B two, is there a contiguous property that's B two? That would be a spot zone in that case. So I'm not sure. And I I know I've heard members of council in the past say that, you know, coming in on Route eleven, what better place to put businesses? But, I mean, that's just a, you know, kind of a legal issue, I guess, we got to look at.
We can check that.
Out of curiosity, the the park land you're doing, the thirty-seven-ish acres, is that driven by topography as to why you're not building on it?
Mostly.
Yeah. It's it's very much like a, almost like a small mountain. I mean,
Yeah.
it's very, very steve. I mean, you can look into topography there. It's pretty.
We talked about, do you do some large estate lots up there? But it's, it it would be good, it would be used as good open space. Yep.
Yep. And with the water.
Boring cave homes.
Okay, yeah. That's true. With water tower being up there, it would make more sense for have park.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the more opportunity for open space that that's usable.
On the northeast side, yeah, for sure.
For the public.
Do you? What, so what do what do the kind of some of the current single-family floor plans look like that you're kind of aiming for?
The one that Steve showed on there, it's about a fifteen hundred square foot home, three bedrooms, two and a half. All the bedrooms were up. I mean, that was just one example. We haven't gotten into the details, but, I mean, we're we're not looking to build, twenty-five hundred and three thousand square foot homes. It just, that's not, that's not what we could use. Probably, you know, in that sixteen hundred foot and under range is probably where this will be. And we're we're going to try, if it's conducive for the lots, you know, as much as we can on a single, single level as well. And I'm sure it'll be a mixture, you know, because some, some, some of the topography, it won't be as conducive to single, single level. Single levels, so might have some replacements. Trying to avoid that as much as possible just because of cost of basements, but we have to, we have to.
What if there is interest in maybe potential buyers who would want two thousand square foot, you know, compared to sixteen hundred? Just curious. Like, you take those like kind of case by case, I guess, if that's, because I mean, I know, I know that there are floor plans that exist that that Shaw uses across the board. So I just don't know how, when you, when you're factoring in a development like this, typically there's that structure or that that design, and there can be limitations on the look and feel and the sizes of houses depending on how you build it. I guess that goes more into planned unit development, doesn't it, when you do that? Like Heron's Landing, it has to be brick and three levels and this size, and it's very, very.
Right. I mean, in town with with R three or R one, I mean, the the style and design is up to the the person who's who's already met with them before they start construction and said, this is what I want. And they're like, no, I don't think you really want that. No. But as long as I can fit it on the lot with the setbacks and meet all the other requirements, there's nothing prohibiting it.
The the house size and the lots lots size, the goal is to not have homes with garages on them. Because it's a lot of, lot of square footage and it's a lot of price. But the lots, the lot would be to where like the one home, if somebody wanted to add it later, they could easily add it on to the side of it. It has a room. We're not putting lots, you know, homes that would be five feet apart.
Right.
So that it has the room that they could add it to. Now, if somebody came to it and said, hey, we want a garage and it's thirty thousand dollars more, and, you know, we'll do it. But that's not going to be, that's not where we're going to start at.
So y'all are going to have, I guess, based on the floor plan, most of these houses are, say, substantially similar. You're still, your your plan is to have a continuity of style and then have add-ons here and there for different customers?
Yep.
What about, I mean, I'm just trying to think from a, I I know housing is always a main concern and shortage is a is a big issue everywhere. Definitely here. So what if you have a large kind of desire from the community who wants to snatch up properties? Are you going to look into maybe doing deposits or some sort of way to reserve lots or something like that? I don't know if that's something you all kind of thought about or not. There's something to think about. I don't know. There's always that potential, right, that, I mean, when you start talking affordable and talking about location and, you know, park space with, you know, with how how it's presented and designed, you know, that could be really appealing to a lot of people, so.
What we don't want to get into is, if somebody says, hey, I want to build my house and I want to build a three thousand square foot house there. We're not trying to, yes, we could build those.
Yeah.
That's not what we're trying to keep it for.
Yep. No, it makes sense.
But if somebody would look at this and say, I want this piece of property right there, when you get to it, you can, you know. Yeah.
We'll have a list.
Yeah. Okay.
And I've I've seen, I've seen some things about the different phases and about when they plan to hit. I've seen six to ten years. Is that kind of what's being thrown on a dartboard right now? I mean. Anybody's guess?
Anybody's guess right now.
Obviously.
Obviously, we'll want to be successful.
Yeah.
But I think it's gonna, it's gonna start, you know, start slow and then build the momentum. We're certainly committed to, we've never been shot away from the twenty hours of the time. Because can't say what you know of that.
Yeah. That's very true.
And it's been kind of interesting to watch the houses up behind the middle school go in, you know, in little bits and pieces and here or there, you know, but but it's kind of that organized build-out of the property.
Even the ones on the corner, they just kind of came up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And we've been interested to to try to figure out the floor plan on those.
So on the the lower level facing the alley, it's living room, dining room, kitchen, just one basically big open room. Twenty foot by thirty-six foot, and then upstairs is three, uh, oh gosh. I don't want to tell you wrong. I think it's two bedrooms, but if it's possible, it's three.
I don't know.
No, it's three. It's three.
You could have two on the front and one on the back or something like that, maybe?
The master's on the back.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So there's no door to the front, to the fifth street side? There was like a big, big window there or something? I think I saw some smaller windows already installed.
And, you know, we've had people like, well, could you add this? Could you add that? But, you know, add a little roof over the door. Well, every time you do that, it's
Yeah.
two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand. And we're trying to keep it as, you know, cost effective as possible.
Yeah. So something to consider that just popped in my head is the the intersection at Pepper's Ferry Memorial. It's already a very busy intersection, and so adding in this, all this traffic, I could foresee there being even more traffic challenges, particularly at that intersection. I think it'd be worth, if possible, to get VDOT involved to do a study on that intersection. Because I I'm with the fire department, so we we've run several recs at that intersection alone. Especially when when winter, we're talking winter participate precipitation and.
Would you like to make that as a recommendation to council?
I mean.
From us?
I mean, however you want to approach it, but.
Appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
I think that road is is.
How, I don't know how that needs to be.
The way it is?
It is, and you.
I mean, it's separate from this project.
But it also coincides. I mean, it does.
Right.
There will be people coming from there. I mean, we've got multiple outlets, the the one at the top, you know, to the right of the hospital, there's a crossover there.
Yeah.
There's several points, but yeah, people will probably turn left there.
Yeah, that's just already a very challenging intersection to navigate. So it's just.
Actually, I think you, what you just mentioned is, I think, a really good thing to have that.
I agree. Yeah, that that will definitely.
Point off of Route eleven directly.
Will definitely help.
That'll definitely help with that issue. Now, if they go there and turn left.
Probably need to request studies on both because.
Probably. I think we have to have something from VDOT anyway, right?
I don't know what that threshold looks like.
On Route eleven here.
Because, you know, Hatchet Road, they did that whole study and they were supposed to put in an intersection there for the new middle school. It is, you see where it is now, but.
Well, question, who's going to pay for it?
I mean. Ah, yeah. Yeah, I knew that was a challenge as well. So with that being, that's town, so I guess it still is VDOT, right, to consider if it's an, if it's a signaled intersection, right? I guess the only way to do that from a town perspective would be stop signs. But, yeah. Because it's, you know, it's four-lane, it's a very lot, it's very wide, and because of that, there's, in my opinion, I think there's a lot of speed issues on that road. With it being thirty-five, so people travel pretty fast on that road in general with, especially coming down towards Bob White. So it can be very challenging to pull out of that intersection when you're trying to turn left either way. It gets very busy, especially during normal hours of the day, too. So whatever that would look like for us, I don't know if we need to do something for council or not, but.
I don't know.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
That's good.
I mean, if it if it just worked into their the the plan, you know, that's totally fine. But if there's something that we need to do or can do from our side, definitely, we're going to know. Yeah. Yeah, I think both of those would be good options to study. Yeah. Okay.
You you mentioned, Pepper, the light right there at Pepper's Ferry.
Well, specifically, the one I'm mentioning would be that intersection.
Memorial doesn't have one.
Memorial doesn't have one with Pepper's Ferry. That's a, those are stop signs on each side of Pepper's Ferry.
On the corner by the old, by the old farmhouse.
Yeah.
That corner?
So, yeah, Memorial and Route eleven have have a have the stoplight.
Right.
But not.
And Pepper's Ferry and Route eleven has a stoplight at the school.
But I don't think, I don't. But I don't think, I don't think good consideration was done on that intersection when they added all this development back in the late nineties, early two thousands. I think that added pretty, a pretty good strain on Pepper's Ferry in general and then you're talking another two hundred units and. You know, then you're talking about how many cars, right, you know, potentially two cars per, per unit, you, you're looking at four hundred additional vehicles at least. Um, so, that's a lot of traffic on a already small two lane road. That would be my biggest concern would, would be the traffic aspect. Uh, I don't, noise, I don't think is gonna be much of a problem because I, I think the. Keeping the, the residential roads smaller will help with that, for sure. But just from a, a, uh, residential perspective and people in the neighborhood, I think they would all probably would love to see a, a stop light at that intersection. I don't know if you've seen, been to the intersection much, but it's pretty rough.
Familiar with that.
It's pretty rough.
Have.
I'd like to see Pepper's Ferry.
Couple like questions on your layout, if you have, um, so. Phase three not being connected to phase two, like physically with a road. What drove that?
That's a good point.
It's really just the topography.
Topography, okay.
Yeah, we've got two low points right down in there. And we knew it was important for that townhome loop to get tied out to another road as well.
Um, and then, so it looks like in phase one, out kind of in the bottom right corner. You have kind of a sort of remote part of phase one. What is topography also driving that, why it's not connected between phase one and phase six?
Yep, can't get, can't get through that little low where we've got the stormwater management area.
Okay.
It does, that's, that's a little five block unit right there.
And it was taking advantage of existing frontage. You could build something barely immediately.
Okay, okay, right.
After the expense, road, building road.
Yeah, yeah, it makes sense, so, I see that, I see that point. Getting as much as you can out so that you can recoup that cost and put it towards your road.
So this dotted arrow going towards the nature trail, does that mean there's gonna be some sort of walking connection to that, is that what that means? Okay. That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure. Or even a little gravelled one or something like, I don't, just to prevent washout, but. I know wildlife is a big concern in this area, there's, there's already people who illegally hunt in, on this land a lot. It's private property, but they do it anyway, so, um, yeah, that's gonna be a, a challenge as well. Something that would probably be more addressed from the town side, but. Obviously, as things get developed, it kind of just naturally pushes those things away as well. But something to consider when you go out there and do physical surveys, there's a lot of. Probably manmade structures out there for support hunting, so, yeah.
Yeah, the D seven takes care of some of that.
Yeah. Yeah, I know coming down Pepper's Ferry and then that, that big turn, you see that, that meets the light of Route eleven. There's always a lot of, uh, nature encroachment onto the road that. Side swipes people's vehicles and stuff and they've done a, I know the town, like I said, a lot of cleanup not too long ago and looks great now that they've. Demolished a bunch, but I was like, oh, I wish they'd keep going, they need a little bit more. Because it is, uh, yeah, some of those trees are, so that would be great if there could be some kind of a little bit cleanup around the areas. That coincide with the road. To help with that, uh, that overgrowth, for sure, would be great.
I'm gonna turn to the commercial area.
Yeah, that's a good question.
For a second. I assume you've got some kind of an idea of what you wanna put there or not? It's just because it's along the road frontage and could be done, it's available. So it's something you might sell just as empty property?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
Grading? Yes, yeah, just like a site preparation, yeah.
Grade the pads in, get it ready, clean it up and then it's ready to go.
Yeah, put some signups up for, for sale or for rent or whatever he may do, okay, yeah.
Yep, and especially the, the piece right along, um, Lee Highway. You know, we're gonna have to get the road in there, we've got some stormwater in that area as well, we'll have some utility ti- time.
Is there anything special you have to do with that because it is a, a route instead of just a road with that being VDOT? When you're talking about just development along that road with any business units and if there's anything special.
We'd have to have, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure, Kevin, how VDOT looks at that road, I mean, if we have to hold full access management guidelines. If we do, we'd have to meet spacing standards for any other, if we did a right in, right out.
Yeah.
Or something into a, into one of those parcels on either the right or the left hand side of it.
I guess it's considered a highway, is that right?
Route eleven, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so.
It's US. US highway.
US highway, yeah. Well, that was what people took before the interstate came in, right?
It was the non-interstate, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, to, to put that road in, that connection, I believe you'd have to have D cell lane and some, or.
We'll have to look at that as part of.
One of those little angled kind of things depending on the traffic volume study and all that, so there's gotta be a traffic study done.
I think so.
Yeah, we would at least do turn lane analysis on any of those connections.
Yeah. Thankfully, the speed reduction helps with that, with that being thirty-five now.
And where it is.
That stretch, is that still forty-five right there?
It, it switches to forty-five right in there.
It's like right in there, isn't it?
Right, right about that crossover is where it comes down to thirty-five.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was, had just written that in there, cause I remembered where the thirty-five swaps over and it's like right, right there, you're going up.
Church, I know the church already was forty-five.
The church is forty-five, but the curve is thirty-five, so.
That's right.
Somewhere along that property, it is where it switches.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
And the signs are not at the same place in both directions either, so.
It'll actually benefit you on the blind, on the blindish turn, but.
Yeah.
Because there'll be thirty-five going into it, but. It'd be forty-five coming up the hill.
I'm guessing that, I would hope the town would be in some discussion as well about the pen, potential uses for. Those B two plots, especially on Memorial, I don't know, I've. Hope they would be as far as any potential, um, admin building uses or whatnot, I don't know if they've talked.
One, one of the things we've talked about is, um. If the town does grow this way, that, you know, the fire department's down here. Rescue squad's now out there. And, you know, one thought I had, and of course AJ talks about moving the fire department from down here out there where he lives, you know. Better for him. The potential of a small stub, substation where they could house a unit, you know, an ambulance and a fire truck. Um, in that area, I think that would be good, a good selling point if it existed. Kind of like, uh, if you look at Blacksburg right across from the hub, there's, you know, there's that little fire station there. We don't need anything that big, but, you know, we don't have that much property to cover. But having it there is kind of a comfort to the folks that choose to live right there.
Yeah, you're talking four hundred additional units, it's a lot of.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously they're newer, so you hope nothing would ever happen, but again, that's, you know, it's more structures to have to protect. Uh, so, that's something to consider as this progresses along a, a substation or. Whatever that may look like.
As far as road access, if they wanted to put it somewhere, it probably makes no sense at Memorial and Pepper's Ferry.
Yeah, I mean, cause Memorial is, it's four lane, it's nice and wide, so pulling out a truck is no problem at all on that road.
They don't have to worry about those medians.
Then you could have your little flashing lights overhead anyways.
Yeah, that's right, if you have an intersection there, you have tra- traffic control from both sides of the road.
Right.
Both at the top of Memorial and at Pepper's Ferry. So it would, it would honestly be perfect, a perfect location because of that.
I have one last zoning question for y'all, so on, in that R three section, you wanna put that area that you're designating as. Park to be R three, what drove R three instead of, um. Like civic or agriculture zoning instead?
Honestly, we, we didn't, just, just didn't think about breaking it out, I mean, it would be normally what we'd do, we'd zone it the same. But we'd put something over it, you know, one, one of the reasons we thought this would be good is with our stormwater management regulations. We can use open space and count it in, in our favor for stormwater quality, you know, basically holds some of your credits. So if you do that, you basically put that in a, not in a conservation easement per se from a tax benefit, but it does. It does put a restriction on being able to develop that.
Okay, so the cost factor.
What is, what is the stormwater management design look like generally for something like this? Is it just a basin with?
Mo- yeah, a- at, at this point, we just looked at those areas, we knew we were gonna have, you know, just based on the existing topography. That it was gonna be getting into some of those other subdivisions. You know, right now, it would just, the, the thought is it would just be a dry basin, just your normal basin, it fills up during a storm and it's drained out in twenty-four hours. And if we've gotta do any kind of channel improvements, whether that's ditch improvements or storm sewer improvements downstream of it to get it to an adequate channel, we'd have to do that as part of our analysis. During the site plant stage.
Yeah, because.
You don't know yet how deep these basins are gonna have to be or. Cause there's nothing uglier to me than having to fence off a stormwater retention pond.
Yeah.
But.
Well, a lot of these, you know, you look at the one there.
Then it's not usable for any other purpose either.
Yeah, the one down in between, uh, sections four and six.
Right.
That's really deep down in that, in that valley, so. We're not required to fence them, you're required to fence them if they're, you know, if you've got a permanent pool or, or, you know, you gotta put some safety benches in. If it's just a dry pond, we technically don't have to fence them. If it's something that the HOA or the adjacent neighbors may want, because you got a lot of kids playing around.
Well, we, with that many housing units, I would hope there's some kids living there, right?
Is it planned to be an HOA? Okay.
So is it gonna be like Country Meadow where you have central, uh, post boxes too for the mail to collect?
It is a USPS requirement to have central gang mail box.
Okay. I had wondered that, cause I, I had noticed that when I went up to Country Meadows.
All of the new subdivisions, we have to do that.
Is that a new requirement? Uh, that's new to me, yeah.
It has just started about what, three years ago?
Two, three years ago.
They really, they're like, nope, gang, cause we've been surprised on projects that were already planned out. We're scrambling to figure out where to put them and, you know, versus, you know, planning.
That's tough, if you've got enough homes and you've gotta figure out how you're gonna pull people off where they're not backing out into the road.
Oh, that is, that is a challenge.
I just met with Blacksburg last week and I got him to. Do single mailboxes, he's still, because of the unique situation of that one. They would have had to driven all the way down to the cul-de-sac to turn around, I'm like, well, you gotta go there. Cause they're not allowed to go in reverse.
It's the built-in exercise program because the mailboxes are gonna be up here at the gazebo. Or space them out along the walking trail.
Well, I mean, that's where sidewalks are beneficial, cause then you can use the sidewalks to go collect your mail.
Right, yeah.
All these are central mailboxes, okay.
And, and you, and the, the way it is, you just have to have gang mailboxes, it doesn't say you have to put them all together, you can put. A ten unit box here, a twelve unit box here, so. We really haven't done a whole lot of it, so we're not good at it yet, I guess.
Yep.
You know.
Wow.
I looked at one project, I had forty-eight, the old Meadows Golf Course, I had forty-eight homes and I was like, well, I'll do.
Well, boxes still, if they're too large to fit in the box, don't they have to be delivered to your house anyway?
So they have the small ones.
Yeah. They still have to come to your house, yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, and I would think the ones that we're showing with frontage along Pepper's Ferry, we, I would hope they'd still give us a mailbox on those. You know, the, he's, he or she's gonna be driving right by there anyway, you know, cause you've got people on that side of the road, so hopefully you'd get a few. You wouldn't have somebody in this, this little, little standalone five lots in section one having to drive into the subdivision to, to get their mail.
So is there gonna be, uh, within the curve, is this gonna be, is there gonna be sewer, like sewer collection? Drains, okay. Now it tie into the stormwater management, right, yeah, okay, alright.
Yeah, the little stormwater pond back here, it just goes right, right there.
May, is that, um, in the middle of Pepper's Ferry Road? Not to the curve, but just in the middle of the straight section down near Memorial. Is that the road splitting into two, kind of the theme entrance of the neighborhood, okay? I've seen a few developments, at least in Richmond, just going back to post office boxes, is they'll make a, a. For a really large neighborhood, they'll make one giant gazebo type thing and they put sixty mailboxes in that.
Or a guardhouse or.
Yeah, yeah, that kind of thing, like right around the entrance of the neighborhood, but just food for thought.
I think whatever we do, it'll be wrong.
I know.
And then half of them will like, oh no, I want it here.
Right, yeah.
We're not good at it yet.
I don't, Mr. Schamman, I don't have any other questions.
No questions?
Okay.
Fire hydrants? Maybe you'll have to put those in there, obviously, so.
We'll have those based on town standards.
So those will, that's, that's a really good line that comes through there, um, I know there's a red cap right there by, uh, Beth Scott Circle. Little, that little circle that would be nor- near the main entrance, but when you get to the top over by Pheasant, I believe that's a. That's a blue or green cap, so that's a really good high pressure hydrant, so. I can't remember exactly where the tie-in is for, for that, but. I'm sure whichever you pull off of, you're, you're gonna have good hydrants through there, because that's a, that's a really solid. Water line you have through that section of town. Yeah, I think, I think they will be okay on that, thankfully, thankfully, that is a really strong section of town when it comes to the, uh, the water system.
That's good.
Yeah, that's all I have.
You've been strangely quiet. Ready to move yet?
We answered all those questions.
Alright, well, appreciate your time and, and, uh.
Thank y'all for coming out, it's a really good conversation.
Sure, there will be more as you come in with your next bits and pieces, so.
Alright, I believe, uh, we had one other item we needed to take care of tonight or not. And that would be choosing whether to untable the discussion of a proposed change to the zoning ordinance. On some kind of home for people over fifty-five. Does anybody want to ta- untable it and discuss it tonight or leave it?
They leave it on the table.
Alright.
I think we should leave it.
And I'm not, I'm not gonna entertain a motion now. Okay, I don't see any other business.
A staff report.
Staff report?
You got anything?
No, okay.
Alright, any comments from anybody?
No, I don't think so.
No announcements, no big changes?
Have one I'll make offline.
What's that?
I'll make it offline.
Okay. Thanks a lot, y'all, thanks for coming. Alright, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Got a second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.